Welcome, everybody, to the joint meeting of the Anchorage Assembly and the School Board. Ms. Bennet-Hawson, could you call the order for the...
Yes, here. Mr. Dunbar? Mr. Dunbar may be calling in a bit later. Mr. Wildson?
Here.
Mr. Compton?
Here.
Mr. Dyson? Mr. Kennedy? Mr. Fran?
Here.
Mr. Peterson?
Present.
Mr. Craddock, ready yet? Not ready yet. Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Present.
Ms. Alvisout?
Here.
Ms. Carrie, out of there.
Thank you.
President Marseth?
Here.
Vice President Hildy?
Here.
Member Bellamy?
Here.
Member Donnelly?
Mine's definitely.
Both of you, okay. Member Holloman?
Present.
Member Mitchell? And, um, Member Mitchell did let me know that she was not going to be able to be here. Um, and Member Piquenius?
All right, thank you. And Chinon, everyone. Okay, minutes of the previous meeting. That says "thank you," I'm trying to pronounce it in our here. But I'm linguistically challenged.
Good job.
Minutes. Did I have to make a motion on this? I'm going to approve the meeting of the, uh, minutes of the meeting of December 6th. Second. Any discussion? Any opposition? Okay, any opposition? All right, those meeting minutes are approved. Uh, approval of the agenda, any, um, changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to take up item 7A prior to item 4A on the agenda, and that would be a briefing from Eagle River High School Student Government. It's kind of a mission moment opportunity.
Any opposition? All right, so let's do 7A, and that is, um, Eagle River High School Students, Student Government, and what agreement is offered.
Yes, come on up. So, yeah, right up in front of the body here, and speak nice and loud, we're recording the meeting. So, uh, for the information of all those assembled, Eagle River High School Student Government approached a number of the assembly members last year with the intent to ask for the renaming of the street in front of their school, uh, from, uh, Yellow Stone, no, from Yosemite Drive to, uh, the Wolf Den Drive. And so they're here to brief us on the steps that they've taken in the process.
Okay, so we have started this...
Could you just give your names or posterity?
Yeah.
Then we'll go in, but you could just, oh.
I'm Brooks Christian, I'm, uh, the senior class president.
I'm Bella Johnston, I'm the senior class manager.
And I'm Abby Maynard, I'm the executive board ambassador.
And I'm Danielle Lewis, I'm their teacher, and I'm an original Eagle River High School staff member, so been there since the school opened.
Okay, so we had started this, um, and this idea back in October. We had, every fall and spring, we write resolutions about something in our school, community, or state. So we, um, wrote a resolution in our student government class, um, and it has to be passed by our class before we can do anything else with it. So we presented it to our class, and we discussed it, and we also did, um, we surveyed our peers to see if they thought it was a good idea also. And everyone seemed to be involved, so we passed it in our class. Um, we discussed the name that we wanted, so we thought Wolf Den Drive would be a good idea because our football stadium's called the Wolf Den. So we did that, and then we discussed, um, the steps we needed to take with Chris, and he helped us go through the municipal code and land ownership and stuff like that. And then we wrote a formal petition, and so we, um, asked all of our peers for signatures and some of the faculty in our school. Um, then we authored a letter to Mr. Mayor, and we sent him the petition signatures. So we had that meeting in November. Um, then we met with Fred Dyson, he came to our school that next week, and he, we asked him to sponsor a resolution to the assembly. And then we attended, um, the meeting that night where we talked about why we wanted this and the steps we had taken. Um, and then we went to the South Fork Community Council meeting, which is the, um, community council where that would be affected. So we did that, and then we, um, presented the formal resolution, um, in Anchorage Assembly in December. And then that's where it was passed, and we were interviewed for the Youth Spotlight on KTU. Then we did a brief Q and A at the local HOA meeting, so we got some questions and some comments. Um, then we waited for the, um, opposition period, and then we presented it to the mayor for his action.
Good, thank you. Any questions? Yeah, what happened?
He just now signed it. It's like five minutes ago.
Any other questions for this student? The solid out?
Yeah. Um, so you said that Wolf Den Drive came out of, um, that it was the football, um, Wolf Den as the football stadium. What did those who aren't maybe so sports inclined think about that? Or is Wolf Den, the Wolf Den, apply to any other non-sport related things at your school as well?
Um, yeah, our mascot is the wolf, and that's also, um, it's assigned in our gym too, so we just take pride in our mascot and who we are as a school.
Anything else? Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I want to congratulate you, uh, for finding out, um, you know, how challenging it can be to get something passed to the assembly. You know, um, government can sometimes be a little cumbersome, and, uh, sometimes at our meetings, we, we say we're making sausage, and sometimes it's not real attractive, but you're hoping that the product that you end up with is, is, is better than what you had when you started. Anyway, I just want to congratulate you on, on weaving your way through the bureaucracy.
Thank you.
Mr. Conset?
Thank you. Now, it's not done, there's a 21-day, uh, comment period from the clerk's date of publication, which I hope they'll publish today. And after that, then the school, if everything works out right, would be looking to May 7th as a date to convene and celebrate the changing of the name. And, um, I would just read, uh, number two on the Article One, Article One, Item Two of the Alaska Constitution on the Declaration of Rights, that all political power is apparent in the people. All government originates with the people, is founded upon their will only, is instituted solely for the good of the people as a whole. And I would offer that you students actually have implemented that article of the Constitution, and have now shown, at least all of the students in your school, that in fact, the power does reside in you. And so my, my mission in all this project was to help you see that you have the power. And so thank you for implementing this and going above and beyond, visiting places you didn't have to go that may or may not have been very warm. Might have been hot, actually. And, um, I, I just expressed my gratitude for you, and as some of you may know, I actually levied a secondary challenge to them as a student government, and that is, for May 7th, it's my hope that every single graduating senior who will be 18 on November 7th will commit to registering to be a voter by May 7th, because you can in fact do that. So that's my challenge back to you, is that you take this opportunity to create a bunch of voters, who, of all of your students. And then my last note on this is, I will be in, uh, DC this week, in discussions with our congressional delegation, I'm going to ask them to come up with an opportunity to name a new national park, even a corner of a national park, Wolf Den. So that then that street can be back in alignment with the neighborhood. And so, um, because the neighborhood, all the streets are named after national parks, so I'm going to be working that thread even now going forward. So, good work, and you are amazing.
Thank you.
I just want to say one thing, as their teacher, my goal for them is exactly what Chris said as well. Um, as a student government teacher, our goal is obviously to promote school spirit and support everybody, um, but we don't just paint signs, and I wanted the kids to really be able to do that. So I want to thank all of you, um, because the school board has also been super supportive in the process, and we're the youngest high school in the district, and we're challenged a lot. Um, and it's been a trying year for our faculty and our school, so just really thank you for giving the kids the opportunity to, uh, learn the process, as you said, Mr. Peterson, because, um, I want them to be functional citizens and adults. That's the ultimate goal for all of our kids. So just thank you for all of you for giving us that chance, so we appreciate it.
Okay, I'd like to welcome the mayor to our meeting. Ms. Marseth, have a...
Hey, I just have a question. So in one sentence, tell me what you learned through this process. I know one sentence is hard, one sentence.
Okay, I'll start. Um, during this process, I've learned that if you put your mind to something and jump through all the hoops, you can still get it accomplished, whether you meet negativity or positivity.
There's a lot of it, let me pause it.
I think that everything important takes time.
Uh, I think I've learned a lot about how all these meetings work, and like, how they're organized and structured and stuff.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's a lot of kudos to be given here, and you know, and obviously, a lot of people have, and unfortunately, I'm going to be the one to throw a bit of a wet rag on all of this. And, um, being the, um, one of the members from, uh, from this, uh, I've also learned that, ah, this has been a really, obviously, a great opportunity for you guys and a great experience, and I would say that everybody wants to be as supportive as possible about this. But what's been lacking in the process has been the engagement with the community that's most directly affected. And that is, the pushback that's coming back right now, are the people that drive that road day in and day out, year after year, um, haven't been consulted in this, and they've tried, they want to bring forward some kind of compromise. So I'm hoping that you will still have a discussion. I know that the mayor and I have talked about this too, just in terms of how difficult this is to balance the, the wants and needs of one group with the wants and needs of another. And, and that's where this process has to continue right now, is to have that conversation with the community, because they are very, they are very much feeling left out of this. Um, and unfortunately, part of our process, there was nothing in there to allow them to do that really effectively. Now, with the 21 days, um, there is potential, uh, opportunity, and I think we'll hear from them, but they are very interested in working with you to try to figure out how to, to maintain what is important to them, as well as support the kids at Eagle River High School, which is the reason why a lot of them moved into that area, was basically because of the high school. So I just hope that you'll continue that conversation with them, and see if there's a way to come to, you know, a hundred percent agreement, rather than one group getting what they want and another group not. So I appreciate so much all that you've been doing, and you guys need to keep at it. Um, but again, this is also part of the process, is trying to figure out what's the other side of the story is, and how do we come together and make something that really works for everybody. So I appreciate you very much, and I know you guys have worked hard, um, but we might still have a couple more, uh, weeks' worth of conversation before we actually get this completely, um, completely done. So, appreciate you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Conset, quickly, would you, very quickly, uh, tell us how you did engage with all the various groups specifically?
Well, first, I had tried to email the Homers Association where those people had, where those people lived, and I just got one response saying, "No way." And so then I went to their website, and I tried to find their board and like their individual emails, and they said, "Well, because our property developer said no, we can't say yes." And so, I, we tried reaching out that way. Um, we went to the South Fork Community Council meeting, and presented our, um, idea there, just so that we didn't feel like they were left in the dark. So they had all, the people who showed up thought it was a pretty good idea. And then we went to the HOA meeting, their annual meeting, and also asked them for questions, comments, and what they thought.
And they did give us some suggestions of what we could do differently. The one suggestion they did give us is not, uh, we can't complete it, because they suggested we named our, uh, loop where parents drop off, but it's not an addressable road, it's just a driveway, so we can't really change the street name of it, and we wanted to try to leave a legacy of changing our school's street address name. So, we have been in contact with them and have went to their meeting.
Well, thank you. Anything else? Congratulations again.
Thank you.
All right, moving back to the... Okay, moving back to the agenda of 4A, ASD fiscal year 2020-2021 budget, do we have a presentation?
No. Um, I think this is basically, uh, if you have questions. Or, I mean, I, we can, Dr. Biggs, 4A.
Yeah, we did not, um, prepare a budget presentation for you. Um, we thought it was just under these questions in regard to health and early dismissals. We have, have a, a budget that, I mean, we could pull it up right now on our website, and, we, we presented that, um, it was, went through the assembly, we didn't, um, it's finished the assembly, so...
No, we haven't voted out yet.
Oh, not voted, okay.
Right, and this is my, Mr. Chair, I'll say, we have just received, like, three days ago, and some people just right now, the budget, it's this big of a document, and it's scheduled for a mandatory public hearing on the meeting of the 10th, and it's my intent that we postpone, continue the item until the meeting of the 23rd, so that we can actually have a comprehensive read and a conversation about the final budget proposal. And so there is some work to be done yet, because we just can't go through that much information in five days.
Okay, Mr. Rivera?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, and it's my recollection that usually in the March meeting is when, uh, the assembly will get a good breakdown from the school district on the budget, and will ask questions before we vote on the budget. So I'm a little surprised that we don't have a formal presentation prepared here, um, but I would like to hear comments from the, the school district on 4A and the reduction of the health program, and then after that, I do want to get back.
Okay. Mary?
Bishop?
Actually, I was, um, our CFO says there's generally a work session scheduled by the assembly, so not at this meeting, but a, a separate work session just on the budget. So that, that's generally the, the process that we've followed the last four years, so...
Okay, any other comments? Mr. Donnelly?
It's coming up at the next, uh, municipal budget committee. It's dividing the advisory commission.
What was the date, Chair?
It was postponed, it was, uh, yesterday, it was postponed till the end of...
I believe we have a statutory requirement to vote on the budget by the meeting of the 23rd.
That's correct.
That's our deadline.
But it's pretty extensive, so we haven't done it here, it's been at it. I know we've done it, that's why I was confused, but it's at a, one of your work sessions, like, on the 12th. It's actually 12?
With the Budget Advisory Committee on the 12th, and then normally shortly after that, we schedule generally on a Friday afternoon or a Friday morning, something for the assembly, and then we, it's usually lasts about an hour, hour and a half. And then we answer all the, any and all questions, um, but that's generally scheduled by the assembly after the Budget Advisory Committee.
So I think we can do that, around the 12th, we can be right after that. So we'll have the staff schedule that in the present, at this moment. Any other comments on this?
So in the meantime, um, so you want to address these two items that are under, um, the budget?
Well, I think if someone can, and maybe that, I think it would help all of us, as we're about to dive into your budget, is, if you could just highlight some things we should pay attention to.
Sure.
I mean, obviously, the Ignite Program and the, the health program was in the paper, but maybe there's some other things that we should look at, um, just so we can focus our reading.
I can start there. To focus your reading, in the beginning of the budget book is actually a small budget booklet. Um, that will be a synopsis of really the expenditures, uh, what, what happens in schools. And they are presented to you, not only how it's made, what goes into it, what the funding formula for the state looks like, as well as the contribution from, um, our city, uh, but it'll go into each, uh, section of schools. So it'll talk about elementary schools, middle schools, high schools, as well as alternative schools, so you have an understanding about the resources that are driven down into the schools. You'll find, uh, PTR, which is a pupil teacher ratio. It's not a class size, it's a metric to assign staffing to schools. So they're different by grade level. Secondary schools are 30.25. Those, secondary schools are considered middle and high schools, and they were increased by 2.25, so not a full FTE, but, uh, some wiggle room for, uh, additional, um, basically what that does is, is remove about eight teachers district-wide in the, in the secondary. Um, elementary schools, the PTR did not change, it was not adjusted. We looked at programs, uh, outside of PTR to do that, to not put more kids in classrooms. Again, if you change your PTR by one, it doesn't mean, um, every classroom gets one person, it really is a staffing ratio on your enrollment to your teachers. So it really depends on what grade level your kids are on, because kindergarten is a smaller number than, uh, say, sixth grade. So sixth grade PTR is 26, kindergarten is, I believe, 20 or 21. So it depends on how many kids you have in each, the, the dispersment of the FTE. What came back from, uh, the way that we build the budget, and that's also in there, it'll just give you a synopsis, is, um, the community feedback, uh, community information. Uh, this year, we did one thing, knowing that, um, resources are shrinking, we did a, a team kind of approach where groups of people could meet together, and then actually come up with ideas for restructuring or redesigning. What would be some ideas that if we didn't just go more kids in a classroom, that's technically the easiest way? Redesigning programs and looking at things differently, um, is a, a more difficult manner of which to address this. So, uh, it was, um, so not only our general feedback, uh, of importance of classrooms, in that, from our community, it was class size, number one, and, and programs. Uh, they like to have programs, they didn't want programs and opportunities eliminated. Um, from, uh, internal, it was, uh, very similar, but they had some ideas of how things could be adjusted. And then, of course, we look at student needs. What are our student outcomes, and where do the needs, resources need to be deployed in order to meet our goals for all students' success in Anchorage schools? So using those three categories in the guidance from the board was how the, uh, district, you know, put together, uh, the budget. In those, of course, what you saw in, um, that made public was, uh, the restructuring of health, and this says, you know, kind of, um, reduction of health program. Um, the actual curriculum for health and the, what kids will receive is not changing, whom is delivering that is, what's the change. Um, it will be, uh, back to classrooms, as well as physical education teachers, which, uh, is similar to middle and high school, is, um, our health teachers are generally our physical education teachers. So it is changing about who's delivering it, not the amount of time kids get, and not the curriculum. So I just wanted to clear that. The other one was, it was, uh, a redesign of the Ignite Program to create a period of time during the day, 40 to 50 minutes, to have basically, um, advanced acceleration or enrichment to happen every day, uh, rather than a group of teachers that kids leave for two hours, you know, two hours a week to go do a separate project, which is enrichment. We wanted to redesign it to also have acceleration, because that's actually one of our constraints, uh, that our parents, uh, find, sometimes they have to bring their kids in early to school or after school, or take an, an additional online course to get acceleration. So that redesign was not approved, uh, so we are going to work on that this year to, to take a look at it. Um, health did move, move forward. There were some other reductions in, um, according to the metric. So counselors are assigned by metric, safety officers are assigned by metric, principals assigned by metric, um, nurses assigned by metric, there wasn't any reduction in nurses due to the metric. Um, there were administrators' reduction by metric, safety officers by metric, and then also, uh, by metric, our teaching force is declining simply due to, um, well, you, you heard, 30.25, so there are eight, um, to 10 teachers because of the enrollment, but because of declining enrollment anyway, we have about another, um, 40 to 50 teachers. I'd have to get the book to look at the exact amount, uh, that would be, um, reduced strictly for enrollment, because we are based off of. And you can understand that if we have fewer students in the district, that will affect the number of employees. So, um, other departments, there were one-offs here and there, you could look in that book, I don't have them, uh, memorized, but the, the, the bigger picture of what's deployed in schools is certainly in that little booklet should tell you everything. It also demonstrates what have been the cuts the last 10 years. Um, I share openly, honestly, uh, the easiest thing to say, if you just got rid of administration, everything would be fine. Um, administration, um, support for schools has been reduced 27%. Administration of people like, um, me, who administer programs at my level, you know, in the different departments, human resources, business, payroll, those have been reduced by, uh, 17% over the last, um, eight years. So certainly, in your school district, that has occurred, and, um, just wanted to, to share that, but those data are in there, you'll be able to clearly see them, as well as the PTR and how resources are deployed. If there's any questions, yeah.
So start with the skinny book, and then dive.
The skinny book. Yeah, the big dive actually goes, what about my school in my area? So that's, um, this is what it looks like, and we have these, uh, this is the skinny book, um, uh, just gives you all the data. These are the charts that you want to see, what happens.
So someone's joined us on the phone, who might that be? If you're on the phone, please mute your phone.
Are you telepathic, are you?
No, of course.
Oh, yeah. Are you not telepathic at all? Are they not telepathic?
No. Oh, we did, I just, we're not, uh, definitely, we met, yes, hardly, we met, uh, and not say we were terrible, we definitely did.
Okay, someone's working up.
All right, so, I'll just, I guess I'll just, oh, did you have more?
No, I just wanted to, this is the booklet, and the, the deeper dive actually can go into, if you want to know, this tells you, high schools in general. If you wanted to say, what about the high school in my zone or my district, then that larger book, you can go right to your high school, exactly see the change from year over to year. So great information, also electricity year over year, insurance year over year. So these are the large aggregate, um, and the, the bulk of it, if you wanted to look specifically, are the extra pages.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, um, so, apologies if this takes a little bit, but I think this is important. So, um, sorry, I'm actually going to wait, because there's a lot of people distracted.
Can you just hand them up?
The Alaska State Council on the Arts, Ginno Arts Humanities Council, and the State of Alaska Department of Administration.
We love arts in our school.
It's banjo music, I'm like... Sure, I guess I'll just deal, as long as everyone can pay attention.
Just talk aloud.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, okay. All right, so, um...
No, that's not going to work.
Great. It's a very private link to a serious topic, uh, good to have.
Do you have a volume? So just have the volume down here. Oh, it's connected to that. Do you have a volume?
It's not wrong with this.
I hope y'all don't use any of this in your newspapers. Let's take a five-minute break.
There's a volume right there. Okay, there you go. Somebody go.
Answer my five-minute break. People are going to be mad. Answer that five-minute break. It's like daylight savings time. You just lost it, sorry.
That's coming Sunday.
All right. Mr. Rivera? All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So first, I just want to preface my statements by saying that you all know how much that I and the, all of the Assembly supports the school district, and we try to do everything we can to help you all. My comments are going to be about the health program and the cuts to the health program. I actually met yesterday with Keely Olson, the Executive Director of STAR, standing together against rape. And we have two of their employees here today, and I'm going to turn to them in a minute. But first, I just want to read an email, I think, that I got from a survivor, just to center this discussion. "STAR saved my life when I was 14 years old. At that time, I was a very hurt girl whose life was saved by my own determination and the services you offer. When I was 13, 14, my relative, redacted, was sexually abusing me, and I knew of no other way out than to end my own life. I had a plan, I had plans of how... I had plans of how I was going to kill myself, down to the day and time. A few days before the date I had chosen, a STAR educator came and spoke to my class at school name. She gave out the crisis line information and stated we should call it. If we ever had or did suffer from sexual abuse, assault, or were raped. A day or two later, when I had planned on killing myself, I instead called to the number she had given out. I had been wearing a bracelet with it, on it from that day. The person who answered the line assured me I would be safe now. They talked me out of killing myself. They called me about three times that night as they worked with the police to make sure I was safe from my relatives. That night, I reported at the STAR facilities with two detectives, who believed, who, two, two detectives who believed me. All the while, I had someone there to make sure I was okay. My relative went to jail that night. After that, he went to prison. During the trial and after, STAR was there for me." And it goes on to talk more about the excellent services STAR gave. This is something that I am absolutely terrified is going to be cut or somehow hurt because of the cuts to our health program. This really highlights, I think, the importance of the subject matter with students. And health programs provide a safe venue for students to talk about these issues. They're not going to talk about these issues in their home room class. Best practices prove that that's just not the case. So I'm going to ask someone from STAR to speak to this, and then I have a question for the school district.
Thank you very much. First, I want to thank you very much for eloquently sharing the voice of that survivor. I've read that letter many, many times, and every time, I get a little choked up as well. It's not easy to hear, and it's especially...
I'm sorry if this is...
...not easy to hear for students. My name is Julie Dale. I'm the manager of prevention and education at STAR. Sorry about that. Thank you. That is an all-too-common moment in our Anchorage School District. We know we have some of the highest rates of child sexual abuse in the nation. Actually, not some of the highest, we have the highest. And that's staggering to hear. And as hard as it is to hear information like this coming from a second-hand moment from a letter that somebody was brave enough to share, it's all too often that our teachers are actually hearing this in the classroom. Making sure that we have specific educators and specific programs that are highlighted to supporting youth in their social-emotional learning as well as their physical safety is incredibly important. Teachers build an incredibly special bond with their students, and we know that youth do not want to disappoint the people in their lives. Having specific education programs where there's health teachers who are very well-trained in that, who are also inviting prevention specialists into their programs to help support students in need, is important for multiple reasons, including that they have an opportunity to disclose to an individual who is there, who said, "I'm, I'm going to believe you and I'll do the best that I can to help make sure that you're safe." I have worked in the Anchorage School District in health classrooms for almost eight years, kindergarten through 12th grade, but my, my niche is K through 6. And seeing the impact and opportunity that youth have to talk with our health teachers, to know that they can go to a specific place where the focus is on the health of their body, their social-emotional learning, and their specific wellness, I've been able to see that impact on our youth. I've been able to be there for disclosures from youth. I've been able to have some of my own personal stories where I've gone back to school the next year and had a kid say, "You saved me too. You saved my sister as well." And thinking about losing these programs in our school district is scary. We know that people who harm children groom children. We know that they need to have an outside source besides our homeroom teacher that they can go to, where they can feel supported, where they can feel believed, and where they're getting a consistent message from kindergarten through sixth grade, not just from their health teachers, but from prevention specialists as well. This touches everybody in our community, this impacts everybody in our community. And I, you know, can't talk enough about the importance of maintaining specific health education programs.
Thanks. So now I have, getting to the point, I have a question for the school district. So given our horrid history of sexual assault and child abuse in Anchorage and Alaska, and the best practices and need to talk about these things in a safe setting that's not the home role of class, how can you assure me that cutting the health program isn't going to hurt, hurt our students and that we're, we're not hurting things like this from happening? Thanks.
So, STAR, chair's question.
So I'm going to let Dr. Bishop talk there in a minute, but, you know, when you talk about health teachers, I mean, they're coming into the classrooms, I mean, I don't know. I, I'll let Dr. Bishop go first and then I have to comment.
Sure. So I, I want to give everyone the, the understanding that the last actual health, health class that we have is a separate that all the kids take to meet the standards is in eighth grade. To put, put this in perspective of 86 schools for elementary school, STAR, what, what STAR does, as well as other invited guests, they come in and they supplement the curriculum. So the curriculum isn't going away. The curriculum for appropriate health of someone, appropriate touch, teaching of safe touch, not safe touch, that's been ubiquitous in the curriculum, every grade level, that's taught. For the data, STAR has been in five elementary schools, and they're invited in as addition. Of those five, three have been health teachers, of all the schools that we have, have invited the additional support in, and one was a principal and one was another teacher. Health teachers at the elementary level are elementary teachers with an additional course on health, similar to how we want our reading teachers to take additional of this. So they're, they're qualified elementary teachers to work with elementary schools. All of our schools and our teachers in secondary, just so you know, for the same reason, because the child that you mentioned was 14, are trained in mental health first aid, so that we do that all secondary. We received, one of five districts across the nation received a grant, we work with, actually, for this mental health first aid, as well as an assessment program with the Anchorage Police Department, we're cooperating with that. I'm not so sure that the data, I haven't ever seen the data that an elementary health teacher has better outcomes than classroom teachers, because actually SEL is directly opposite of that. Social-emotional learning and creating the connections with teachers in a safe environment is the latest, it's the Aspen Report in regard to how do we create environments that kids feel open and connected? Relationships matter, so maybe that's what was a reference, that maybe someone has created a relationship. But again, the, the, not only STAR, but other organizations that we bring in are as an invite, and they supplement the curriculum, but the curriculum isn't going away. In fact, six years ago, the curriculum was given in this other manner. It was changed when additional prep time was needed. So we created a course, once, one hour a week, every two weeks, opposite of art, to be able to meet the teacher need of prep time, and then focus on, and then be able to, so we took the health curriculum out and, and put it here. So this is now an ability to integrate health in other subjects. Generally, the safe touch is delivered by the nurse, because it is kind of uncomfortable for some teachers, as was mentioned, that the nurse comes in and, and supports those. So again, the, the curriculum itself isn't, and, and I just applaud the community partners for coming in and, and a kid hearing something a different way. But certainly, mental health of it in itself, for the suicide part, is a, a board goal and, and outline, so they are actually putting more efforts into that. And then the curriculum itself, where kids learn about these things, that, that's standard, that's not disappearing, and, and teachers are trained on it, and in fact, in two of our schools, Wander Park and Willowah, we participated and had a pilot this year, and it was successful. There was very positive outcomes for that. So we would continue to have guest speakers in our rooms. That isn't going away. By Alaska statute, however, that is very highly organized, and it has to go through a vetting system, due to the statute that was passed about three years ago, four years, the year right before I came in. So we don't look to eliminate guest speakers, and we don't look to eliminate any kind of health curriculum. And as you know, by state law, teachers are mandatory reporters, so we are also trained in child sex abuse and, you know, warning signs, things like that, and what we can and can't do. So we're, we're actually legally held responsible for that. So I, I understand the concern. Health and safety is a priority, and we continue to work on it. This is a delivery system that's going to look different, not taking away health curriculum and access to certainly our great partners that are in the city.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera.
I will, but I want other people to...
Okay, great. Ms. Alata.
I'm going to switch from health, so with the other comment. So if someone else has health, and then I would like to say that, kind of go back into that.
Quinn Davidson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Ms. Rivera, for sharing your comments as well. So I'm, I'm just a little confused, because I'm hearing from Dr. Bishop that people will, other outside organizations will still be invited, and that the curriculum is the same. So can, would you mind speaking to what the core of your concern is, given what she said?
Absolutely. Thank you for that question, I appreciate that. Not only having worked with students in the Anchorage School District for the last seven years, I've worked very closely with educators. I've worked with health teachers, I've worked with nurses, and I've worked with homeroom educators. And I have had expressed to me on more occasions than I can count, where I have had a homeroom teacher say, "I'm not teaching this, I'm not comfortable with this, I don't know what to do with the disclosure, I, I wasn't trained on talking about child sexual abuse." So that's the fear of the same curricula being taught by a homeroom teacher. Even though they're excellent at their jobs, they are passionate about students, I've spoke with them and said, "Why are you, why are you educating students?" When they said, "I'm not comfortable with this topic, I'm not going to teach it." And I said, "Why are you, why are you educating students?" And they say, "I want them to be successful and healthy and happy, but I can't talk about this with them." And I've been in situations where I've actually been there, working with teachers to try to prepare them for these conversations, and that's expressed to me over and over and over again. And so that's a major concern. Even though the curricula is the same, I've had so many educators express to me that they're not comfortable with that topic. They say, "Why isn't that being taught at home? It's not my role, and it shouldn't be taught in my classroom." Even though they believe it should be taught. So that's one of our major concerns. Yeah. Thank you.
I would just, the example given here too was at high school level, and that had occurred, I mean, that's the uncomfortableness, that had occurred with another law titled BREEZE Law, which is a mandatory training from teachers. So think about this, and I talked to Senator L. V. Gray Jackson about this for her bill as well. If you think about, there's a dating, it's called dating violence, and this is the same, you know, harassment, sexual assault, so there's state mandated training for every child in ninth, secondary schools, seven through 12, that has this training twice a year. In middle school, you have health teachers, and every kid has to take health. In high school, health is an elective. So think about the organization of 24,000 secondary kids, about 10,000 of them are in, actually, 24, probably not even that, about 7,000 are in middle school, we have them covered. The other 17,000, the organization to provide the mandated training, which is valuable, on sexual violence and dating violence, BREEZE Law, you have to organize then to give it to kids twice a year, an hour-long session. How do we then deploy the information? The only way that a child could have a teacher, so you would have to find something in a school that a kid actually takes every day, right? So what are those two courses? English and social studies. All the others are electives. I can take, if I had to get every kid, every year, twice a year, I'd have to find something that children take, what courses. Without any other, because we weren't given any finances to help finance how to get almost 20,000 kids trained twice a year in those two hours. So what we did was, the teachers organized, and it was organized through the Health Department and the district. The two courses are English and social studies. So there are teachers, there was a designed curriculum that in order that we could say absolutely every child in high school in the Anchorage School District did get this curriculum, if it was allowed, because you do have a waiver out by parents. We had to go through sci, or social studies and English, and we let each school determine it. Because every kid you knew would have a subject of English, and every kid you knew would have a subject of social studies, but math and science and health and PE, they're all electives, and you couldn't guarantee. So if you think about the deployment of such things as state law for safety of children, it funnels down, and it's going to funnel down. And I would say what's true is, at the secondary level, that I heard it, this is not some, this is not why I went into education to teach, but is it the law to teach absolutely? How would you then deploy it in a school if you didn't have the resources to deploy it? I am confident and comfortable with elementary teachers, being an elementary teacher, experienced myself. I'm a math teacher, but I also went down to elementary for three years, lots, for a job, to teach the curricula that is in health. It is absolutely, at that level, it is, it is doable for elementary teachers. Would I say we have lots of uncomfortable teachers in older grades? Absolutely, because the content gets more and more specific. And at the elementary school, generally what happens is a nurse comes in, when it gets to those content areas that are touchy, you know, I'm not talking about the blood system, I'm talking about good touch, bad touch, our nurses come in, and that's how we've been able to do it. But there is a problem with some of the curriculum that we're responsible for in the trainings, where we don't have the best, most trained people to do it. In your high schools right now, twice a year, BREEZE Law is taught by social studies and English teachers, because that's how it can be done.
I mean, I appreciate that, seems like a different issue.
It's difficult, yeah. Yeah. It's totally, and those are older kids that are dating.
So do you have a way to ensure to us, if this budget is passed, that all elementary students will be receiving this information? Like, how can we know that the teachers are doing that? I mean, if, if she's saying that teachers aren't comfortable doing it, and you're saying they are, how do we know?
I'm not saying teachers are comfortable, I'm saying teachers are highly capable of doing it, especially with the elementary, with the elementary curriculum, and health, and, and nurses do it as well. Assured you as much as any other curriculum, we have schools, we have principals in schools, they're evaluated. The curriculum is not changing. They use a, a curriculum module to do this.
But it's changing in the sense that new people are teaching.
Correct.
So they might be like, "Oh, yeah, it hasn't changed," but I have no familiarity with So they might be like, "Oh yeah, it hasn't changed," but I have no familiarity with this. So it might be worse.
Yeah, there's training and things like that. We're going to do all the professional development for the change. But to have, actually to absolutely guarantee that every kid is going to get everything, I don't know how you would do that unless you had cameras in every school class. I mean, we have a system, we have highly professional teachers, we have a curriculum to teach it. You know, we do, you do have to go on record two weeks prior to the delivery of just the good touch, bad touch for parents to, and the human growth and development, for parents to say and approve that their child gets that. Okay, so there's a sign-in. So knowing that that's even narrowed down to a two-week period where we get nurses to come into classrooms with people. So again, you know, I mean, the issue is like five classrooms at the elementary level had STAR in them anyway, you know? So it has been, it's taught, it's what we do, it's what we're responsible for. As far as guaranteeing that we're transparent, that we're open, that we have highly professional teachers, we'll assure our teachers that if, you know, it's going in with the training, that if you're uncomfortable, the nurses are there to teach it for you, which is how it used to be done.
Chair Marceau?
I just want to point out, you know, mental health has been a real priority with the school board and how we're looking at, you know, we've talked about health, but I think what's more important is we need to get mental health professionals into our schools. And so that has been a priority, that's what we're working on. Not that health is not important, but here's the other thing I want to tell you. I mean, we're like basically 20 million deficit and we are looking on how we can, instead of cutting things, how can we redesign them and still save costs? Because our utilities went up this year by 19 million, just utilities. And it's not going to get easier for us. You're going to see more of this and, you know, I wish it was different, but it's not. It's just like the IGNITE program. We're looking at a different way to provide the service, even though it might not look totally like it did before, we're trying to do it without cutting programs. And so, you know, please try to take that in mind when we're doing these things, is that we're trying to do this without actually cutting the programs, but to deliver it in a different method so that maybe we can save some money and hopefully get mental health professionals in our classrooms.
Thank you.
And I'll come back to that one topic.
All right. Thank you. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So redesigning and looking at programs differently, this is really timely. So this past week, I had my daughter's IEP meeting and I think this is on the mind of the educators at the building level. And I was told she would get 30 less minutes of special education services because the principal doesn't want to have as many subs for the resource teacher. So it was automatically cut. I know that's not okay. I know that's not legal. It should be based on needs. The reason I bring this up is a giant red flag. I am an extremely sophisticated parent when it comes to this stuff. If we are redesigning and looking at programs differently, we need to do so in a way that does not harm students, that still follows the law and the requirements. So while I appreciate the physical constraints, 110%, we need to make sure that the messaging from the district level down to the building level on down is one that is appropriate and that the supports are there. I was appalled when I was offered that. I obviously rectified it, figured something else out, worked collaboratively with my IEP team, but other parents won. Other parents will just take the 30-minute reduction. And that has implications when we start talking about students, it presumes that she no longer would need those services and that is not the case. So I want to, as we're having this conversation and we're talking about this, raise this red flag. And I don't think it was a one-off and I don't think it was any mal-intent, let me be clear about that. But we really need to be careful when we talk about redesigning and looking at programs differently, that the unintended, potential unintended consequences and that there is true district direction all the way down to the building and teacher level to ensure that implementation is done in a very conscientious way.
I can comment. I agree with you. I mean, the direction is appropriate, the direction is there, ensuring that 3,600 people do what you, you know, expect or ask you for is different. It isn't appropriate. IEPs are built around the needs of children, so I'll look into how the communication is being done because certainly of any program over the last eight years that is actually increasing, I think it's eight and a half percent in here is special education. While our enrollment has decreased and special education is increasing, so the needs are becoming greater and greater. So I'll look into that and plan accordingly because it is based on what students need, not the principal need, doesn't need a sub, that's inappropriate.
I mean, and it's not just with regard to that particular thing, what I am saying, you know, as it applies to health or other things, as you look to redesign programs, that we ensure that the intent of what the program is for and that will still achieve its actual goals and intents of why we have it, I really, you know, the kind of programs we're talking about, whether it's health, special education, for IGNITE, I mean, they have really specific kind of outcomes we're hoping to achieve with those. And I just don't want that to get lost in, you know, trying to be more efficient. So I guess that's actually the broader point I wanted to make with that specific example, is that there's a core mission for all those things and that that really needs to be preserved.
I don't think it's being missed at all. Those are the discussions. I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So several other issues have been raised since I first got to make you. I'm very curious about the 19 million increase on the utility side, but I'll leave that for another day. Dr. Bishop, just had a question, so I'm clear on the health classes and how much more like teachers are having to take on at the elementary level? That hasn't changed so much? Or could you just break it out for me? By middle school, I understand there's a dedicated requirement and I'm assuming there are still dedicated health teachers for that? Is that what I heard? And then at the high school level, because it's an elective, are there then dedicated health teachers to teach that elective or is that being added on to existing loads for teachers?
So at high school, generally what happens is for the certification, of general certification of health teachers, is usually a PE health certification. And that's what happened when we moved to having elementary health teachers, we didn't have enough in the district because that's the traditional path. So general educators were offered the position first to, like a third grade teacher, to get specially, you know, an extra six hours of training in health to be able to do it. So that's how they could qualify for the position. In middle and high school, it is PE health teacher. What we're looking at in our primary ask, but we're going to leave it up to buildings to see how it fits in their structure because of the two pilot programs that we have. The two pilot programs were able to successfully implement health in their classrooms and at the same time, they increased access for all kids for extended learning or the types of learning like IGNITE gives. So they do extended learning for all and then some get more. So some get all, some get more. So the actual pilot programs that went on in elementary schools this year had to do with meeting needs of IGNITE and increasing them for the equity issue, as well as being able to teach health. And both were successful. Teachers found it successful in those two buildings, very, very positive, as well as the access for advanced education for all kids. And then, so some get a little bit and, or some, we say, their motto over there, the principal says, "All get some, some get more," for, you know, depending on their levels. So we have met those intents with these pilots. So this isn't about not considering things. I just want everyone to know, it's not like, oops, let's just figure this out. We've actually had pilots running these programs. So at the middle level, it's PE health, high school, it's PE health teacher as well. You actually, at the secondary level, to give credit in a course, you have certification in that specific. Elementary teachers are all generalists. The way that Anchorage deploys health teachers just for health is actually probably in the top 5% in the nation in elementary schools. Most elementary schools don't have a separate health, health class, it's PE health. What we want to do and what we're doing is increasing PE by, if it's 45 minutes, twice a week for the older kids, increase it, put another 15 minutes on each so that they could actually have increased time with their PE teacher to be able to do PE health. That's the first ask. If it was younger kids, they do PE three times a week, it could be an additional 10 minutes each or 15. So we looked at different structures. That is the first goal. But because we had these two schools that effectively increased IGNITE for all and were able to redesign health to be able to do that and have play with their FTE, we didn't want to take away classroom teachers teaching health. So it might look differently in different schools, but the standards for which we want students to learn are going to remain the same. And actually, the curriculum's the same as well. So the standard is the big what, the curriculum is how we're going to get it there, it's just the who that's different. But due to those different ways that are highly successful now, PE health as well as a classroom teacher, we decided to allow those school buildings to evaluate, what are our resources here? How do we want to, you know, do we want to still keep this district enrichment or the school-wide enrichment program and still have our teachers teach here? Or does the district mandate every PE teacher will teach this? So we decided to allow the buildings and the schools that have successfully met those criteria and had positive outcomes, and their teachers are the ones giving the feedback, to be able to make that determination. That's a great question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just say that that's a little bit different than some of the public perception. I've heard that health is cut.
It's, it's how you want to, that's, yeah, it's very different. But at our meetings, at our board meetings, this is what we talk. So if you watch the YouTube on the board meetings, they're delivered there and we try to, we do our best, but you all know too, that different understanding can happen after what happens at a government meeting.
We would certainly attend, except our meetings overlap.
Actually, what I want to say is relevant directly to this.
Okay, go ahead.
And that's something I want to say, I think it does hurt kids. From Ms. Alatell's point, yeah, when we bump up against legality, that should never happen. We're reducing the number of people that have contact with kids, the number of trained professional people that have contact, and that hurts. We're not doing this because we're trying to be more efficient, we're doing this because inflation is eating away at our program. We have to let some people go, or in this case, reduce some positions. Some people are leaving anyway, so that's a little easier than actually having to let someone go. Everybody, I think, understands that not all teachers connect with every kid. As a classroom teacher, I had some kids that were really comfortable talking to me about all kinds of things. I had some other kids that would never say a word. And I think every teacher has that experience. And so when you bring in specialists, when you bring in people that do different things, some kids are going to light up to that person that ordinarily wouldn't. We're not going to have as many people in the elementary school building. We're not going to have people that focus only on this topic and deliver it over and over again with regularity, which, especially when you're talking about sensitive topics or you're talking to a child that's being abused or is in a difficult situation, the practice and the repetitiveness and the experience of dealing with that multiple times rather than once every couple of years is going to make a difference in how well it's done. We need adjustment for inflation so that we can keep these programs that we put in because we thought they were a better idea. We need that adjustment for inflation so we can continue that way, as opposed to trying to pick the least damaging thing to the smallest number of kids and re-optimize them. I do think it's a critical point to emphasize to people that we're not cutting the program, except that we are cutting instructional time at elementary because of the loss of that staff we're losing under this plan. We will lose an hour a week, every week next year. That's not good. It doesn't help families, it doesn't help kids. We're doing it for budgetary reasons. We can't find money within the administration and people actually look at the balance of where money's spent, they'll see that there's not enough money in administration that you can make dramatic cuts and compensate for this. Our big expense is instructional staff and we cannot make significant cuts to our budget without impacting instructional staff. And I hope when we make cuts there, it is always bad for kids because we should not be spending money there unless it's good for kids. So by logic, yes, this hurts kids and I hope our legislature can do something about it.
Thank you. Mr. Condon?
Thanks, Ms. Alatell. I'm trying to grasp the link between the school district and STAR in this conversation. Are we cutting contracted funding or what's the thing here that?
Just a good desire, I think, to continue, because really STAR has been in 11 schools, five of them elementary, and it's by invite and guest speaking, so that will continue. That's not, but I think the care of all kids is certainly demonstrated.
You know, and we love our partnership with the Anchorage School District. And I don't want to disregard your numbers, but we've been in 20-plus schools in this school year. The majority of them have been elementary schools. And I know one of them was Wonder Park where some, or one of the schools that you mentioned where some of these new programs are being implemented, and we actually taught that in the elementary school classroom this year instead of the elementary teacher because they weren't comfortable teaching it.
And that's perfect.
Right. So that's great. And so our push is that because of best practices, because we know that when youth only have access to one teacher, that the increase of harm is exponentially raised. So whenever we look at another school district where we've had an elementary educator who was sexually abusing children for years and years and years, who was supposed to be teaching this to them, there was no access to going outside of that classroom, to have the conversation outside of the teacher that was sexually abusing them, and an opportunity to disclose to another individual. And this harm happened for years. And what we're looking at is whenever students do not have that direct access to another health teacher in their schools, to walk out of their classroom, who, hopefully there's teachers who were not harming those children, but that happens, when they do not have access to another teacher to disclose this information to, where they can freely go and it's, they're not outing themselves or making a scene about it, they have free access and best practices to have another person to disclose to.
So is your position that the school district should have a separate health teaching program, separate from the regular?
Absolutely. Yeah, for sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just want to make some final comments and I would appreciate everyone taking the time to talk about this very extremely serious issue. And I'm going to try to embody Senator Betty Davis right now. And just imagine if she were in the room, what would she say? And I think one of the things that is important, extremely important to know, is that while no many other school districts across the nation, they don't have explicit health teachers and programs and classes, no other, no one else in the nation is number one on sexual assault and domestic violence. And I think it's so important that we come back to that issue and that's why I'm bringing it up. Also want to note that I'm not bringing this up just to bash the school district. I'm bringing this up and I'm also working with Ms. LaFranz on talking to the legislature and encouraging the legislature to more adequately fund the education throughout the state. And so we're going to have a resolution coming forward to the legislature to do that soon. So I don't say all of this in a vacuum. But I think it's important and to know, you know, of all the things to cut, it just seems to me that this isn't one of those areas that we should be cutting and for all the reasons that Ms. Alatell stated about unintended consequences. So I'm glad that we're possibly postponing this vote, you know, otherwise I may have to seriously look at voting no on this budget, which I've never done before. Wouldn't take that lightly.
All right, thank you.
Just as a point of assurance perhaps, you know, this, we go out and talk to principals and teachers and say, what do you think, what can education look like? and teachers and say, what, what do you think, what can education look like? There's no one who cares more about our students than, than our principals and teachers. So when we talk to them and work with them, they don't just say, that'll, that'll work because it'll be fine, it's not important. I mean, they are constantly weighing, what is the best combination for, how do we help children get from K to twelve to, to be safe, or all these things we hear? So this is important to all of us, and I just want you to keep that in mind, that our, our teachers, they know how to do this well. So I, I just, I'm a little confused by some of what I heard.
All right, thank you. We spent a long time on this, but it is very important. I appreciate Mr. Rivera bringing this up.
Well, I, I just have to say one more thing. I mean, the board has voted on this budget, understanding the difficulties and, you know, looking at the issues with this. But it was voted on, it did pass. I would have to say that I would be very disappointed if the Assembly did not support us in what we were, what we have very closely looked at and relied on the experts to be able to move this forward.
Mr. Donald?
This particular budget proposal has a larger draw from reserves than traditionally, as you have seen with school district budgets. Two or three years ago, we were drawing four million dollars a year. Last year, we went up to five million dollars a year, I believe. This year's proposal's six. The administration's been doing amazing work in, in budget restraint over the years to replenish those reserves. But faced with the incredible challenge of the nineteen million dollar gap we had this year, the board made the decision to accelerate that and have a six million dollar budget. That's how challenging, that's how challenging this budget was.
All right, thank you. And we'll have a work session to talk about it more. All right, moving on, we have late starts, early dismissals. Now, we've got less than forty-five minutes in this.
Late start.
But no early dismissal. And I took away your five-minute break, so watch out. Did this come from a Assembly member in special?
Miss Pam.
Okay. We could, maybe that could be part of the
Budget, it's part of the budget.
The budget work session. And just kind of highlight that. I think maybe come back a bit to the health issue and then talk about the late starts and early dismissals. Okay, so.
I want to get like a thirty-second blurb to preview it.
Well, that would be good. How about a thirty-second blurb? Thirty seconds?
Should I put my tie on? So the late start, early dismissal was put into play for professional learning communities. It'd be part of a PLC. It's actually evidence-based, research-based idea about that teams of teachers do a better job together than working in isolation. So the difficulty in schools is finding, when do we get teams of teachers together to plan for that school and plan for kids? You could relate it to the, the discussion that we just had. Individual people alone don't impact children. The school system and the whole entire school does because there's multiple touchpoints of adults during the day. So we're using research to kind of help solve another problem. Right now, we have eight schools with a late start where their teachers then join together. We have it right now at high schools. And the reason being is that, you know, it pushes their hour later, you know, and that's where we got some of the late start information. But this is actually, and Member Holman touched on it, we have to make up sixty minutes of prep time for teachers. And so we thought, how is it that we're going to redesign and figure out, how do we get teachers together? Could we do a PLC? Many schools do this. They have an early release anyway. Once, once, schools across the country, like one day a week, and they try to get absences or doctor's appointments during that time. Many of our charter schools actually have an early release. High schools generally do late start. Elementary schools do early release. It's really to do the professional learning community. There's four tenants around it that you would study. But certainly, it would be something that we would look at to engage community, get more community-wide programs in our schools for elementary kids who cannot, you know, for the babysitting or watching childcare after school or before school, depending on what had happened for that hour. We would need to do it district-wide if we did it simply for busing. If you jump a bus an hour later, all, there's four tiers of busing, they're all connected. So in order to have it revenue-neutral, it would, it would be early start, late, early release, late start. So we're engaging like Boys and Girls Clubs now and things, Twenty First Century Schools about, can we have kind of an activity once a week established during that time as well for families that need it? So we're, we're working through those. As well as kids that need to get caught up or homework time, we're looking at how do we staff those? Because our, our staff that are not teachers meeting, our support staff, TAs and aides can run after-school programs, games, chess, things like that. So we're, we're, we're looking at that. That's what a late start early release is. You can look it up as a PLC if you want to Google it, professional learning communities. It's five to four.
Thanks. You were right on there.
Where is it reflected in the budget? What am I looking for?
So in order to, it's all a domino effect. In order to look, and remember, the primary goal from our community was don't increase class size and not, don't reduce programs. So to keep some semblance of all of our programs, the health teacher, I said it before, actually provided, when the contract changed about seven years ago, we put health teachers in to cover an hour, because elementary teachers boosted up in prep time, to cover an hour of prep time a week. So, so health teachers go, do two of those. So we only have health actually every other week and then art every other week. And that hour is covered by those teachers to give classroom teachers time to prep, to have parent meetings, to prep their lessons. So in order to, if, if the health teachers in that hour was taken away, then where do the kids go? Back to their homeroom? No, they go more to PE, they go more to library. So that's how we're increasing PE time, also meaning a statutory requirement of fifty-four minutes a day. So we're, all of these statutory requirements, that we're finding ways to put the puzzle together. So that's why it's in the budget. Without those health teachers, you have an hour outstanding. So partly to make that up, additional PE time as well as a late start, early release.
Would that help you ferret it out?
Yeah, I think so. Thank you.
Anything else on this, Ms. Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know this does exist at the high school level already, but my grandson gets to take advantage of it. But typically, the school buses still run the same hours regardless of whether or not it's a, a late start date. So will that, how will that work with, with the elementary being involved in that?
Right. So school buses, if everybody went to later, later, all the buses would, they would have to run. If it was a late start, we could do something where the buses would still possibly, if we had enough support in the school, that if parents wanted to pick their kids up an hour earlier day, they could. But then everyone else would be involved in some type of activity. The buses could still leave at a late start. But they have to be connected. That's why it would be district-wide. We couldn't do it one-offs for elementary school because you, you, everything has to be joined the same. And that's why you can go to school or don't have to, but they rotate in adult supervision right now. This would literally be, teachers would have to be released and TAs take over. So it couldn't be just, I'm going to do it at the middle school and not here, I'm going to do it here. The whole district, in order to not affect it financially, because the, the busing, our busing is a huge, huge cost, over ten million dollars. So we couldn't, it has to be connected to do it with elementary school.
Okay. So I guess I'm trying to still figure out how that works in terms of kids getting to school and if they want to take advantage of the time before the late start to
It would not be allowed because you would have to have supervision.
For even at the high school level. So in other words, the way they do it at the high school level now will be different. It won't work the way it currently works.
Correct. High school would have to adjust. Good question. And, and the, the thing is, is high school kids can kind of come into a, we can't just say, you know, you can go to the library or hang out in the cafeteria or whatever. You, elementary kids would have to be engaged. And so what we're looking at, you can't, because you're, if you're an hour late for middle school, that, then everybody would either have to be an hour late for elementary. You couldn't have half your elementary starting and not because it's a system. It's a, you know, lots of buses running. So they, everybody would have to be connected. But there is an opportunity, if it was a late release, you could have it be an option if we had enough programs join into the school for that hour so that the buses would run the same time. If you want to pick your child up, you can, or he or she could stay for this activity. But we would need to really think globally about what kinds of activities, what would we do, who would staff them, private, public partnerships come into the school.
Let's flesh this out at the work session.
Yeah.
Sounds very complicated. Okay, anything else on this? Okay, next item is the Six-Year Capital Improvement Plan, which I suppose is that's what we put on. Would that tie in with the budget work session?
Well, you could do that. Our six-year capital, I mean, we've got a new one out there that we just printed. I mean, it's pretty easy. Next year, there won't be anything because our bond's going to pass. I can be confident. This changes. I mean, even next year, it can change, given what happens. I mean, it's a, it's kind of a living document. But we can certainly give an update on that at the budget meeting.
Would that work? Do, anyone else have something?
Yeah, we could do that. We didn't know what your questions were. That was from you as well.
I just, this will come before the Assembly. It will come before the Assembly for, for Assembly notification during the evening session.
So if we have a budget work session, do we typically fit in the
No.
SISL at the same time, or is it a separate?
No, it's, this is separate and it just comes before you, as you said.
Because this, this, this is for information. The, the school board approves it, the district presents it to both Planning and Zoning Commission, and then the Assembly for information, and then it goes forward to the state.
All right. All right, thank you. Okay, comprehensive plan, land use matters, safe walking routes, school's on a Tudor Road near Benny Benson School. This was, of course, Dunbar issued also from last meeting. Is there any update on that?
No.
That's not a force. Force raises this issue. It's an issue for
Traffic Department representative?
Is there someone from traffic here? Could you give us an update? Or you'd have to come forward and state your name and tell us if there's any action?
No. John Krabzak, acting traffic engineer. The update is, we have developed with the school district, a, would be a 1.5-mile map showing walking routes, preferred walking routes in the area. And I think that's going to be, or posted at the school with some other information about preferred walking routes to and from.
Is that a change from the current state? I mean, there's safe walking routes now, or is there?
That school does not have a safe walking routes map because it's not considered a walking school. So it wasn't, it isn't included in the, in the safe walking routes documentation.
But they're being added?
It's being, well, there, there's a map being generated for it. It's going to be posted at the school with other information on transportation availability to and from the school.
Okay. Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And this was probably brought forward by, by Eastside colleague because of an unfortunate incident where a student was killed crossing Tudor Road on his bicycle on his way to Benny Benson. And we have had meetings with community councils and citizens from that area that are worried about the speed limit on Tudor Road. And they, they have actually, are coming together and going to be approaching the traffic department about a, a speed reduction in that area. And it's, and if you look at the traffic accident history of that area, there's been numerous accidents happen there, not only with pedestrians and bicyclists, but also vehicles. And part of that has to be the fact that, and I drive that area a lot because it's along my district. And many times, people are driving sixty or sixty-five miles an hour if you're there. And it's downhill. And in the wintertime, you just, if there's any ice or snow on the road, you're just not going to be able to stop. And so it's, it's a dangerous intersection. And I think we just wanted to make people aware that there's going to be some community outreach to make some changes there. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anything else on this?
So if I might, I thought the conversation was more related to a broader conversation about a working group between the school and, school district and the Assembly. And I thought you were working on this, Ms. LaFrance.
Through the chair. We passed the resolution and at this point are manually tracking and working with traffic on areas that are considered unsafe or dangerous routes. I mean, there is the existing tactical committee that takes a look and, and ranks, but there are routes that don't fit into that. So you're correct, we're still working through, I mean, how the mechanics of it, what you can handle.
Okay. All right, thanks. Thanks for that. Anything else on this? Don't go far. Okay, so the next item is the non-motorized plan. And I asked for this to be put on, just very briefly mention that it was just released for agency review. And is that period done?
I don't believe so.
Okay. So is there anyone from the municipal, I'm sorry, school district looking at that non-motorized plan? And that would be bicycle, and mostly a capital thing. Like, where do we put, say, if our schools have a gap, you know, could we offer up a solution?
Tom?
So the, the immediate answer to Member Welton's question, we do have the Safe Student to School Committee. Do we have anybody specifically looking at this? No, we do not.
Can that happen? Is it, it's all, it's that big, but it's a lot of picture.
It could. Yes, sir. It, it could.
Just a note to that, that it could. The wisdom of doing that is that this plan is going to set our policy for the next five years or so. And if we aren't addressing concerns related to how kids are getting to schools, you're going to have a better mind for how that can be done than we can. But we need that input because the time is ticking, the votes are going to happen, and then the ship is going to sail. And so while I know it's more work, it sure seems like a good strategic effort for the next five years to at least hear from the school district on where we should be looking in relationship to schools and in relationship to our non-motorized plan with the MTP. It's, it's a very important aspect.
Thank you. Ms. LaFrance?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you for putting that on this, on the agenda under that section. I agree with Mr. Constance. Some of our previous discussion about safe walking routes was how to ensure that ASD is involved in the policy decisions and get that feedback concerning
So, so the non-motorized plan is a committee that does that right now?
So, Ms. Welton, it's AMATS, right?
Right. It's through the AMATS, which is the group that allocates federal funding. So it's, it looks at, you know, bicycle lanes, bicycle routes, pathways, sidewalks, all these kinds of things. And even, I would expect, there's probably a list that that committee has that says, gosh, here's some things we wish we had. That would be a starting point, send that in.
Right.
And the staff on AMATS can look and say, is that
Who are the staff?
Craig Lyon.
Craig Lyon, it's their, Joni Will.
So if I might, I would suggest if you have a staff person who can at least begin to be point person, we can make the connection between that staff and the proper staff and the
Well, that's our main, it's, it, an invite is all we need. So when you want our input on something, that, that's perfectly okay.
I will make sure, because that would be disappointing if you were not.
Yeah. Yeah. When we, when there's something that is important to you, that you would like our opinion or in regard to policy, absolutely, just let us know.
And so in this instance, would it go to Mr. Roth?
It'll go to Mr. Roth. Yeah. And then he would assign somebody. Yeah.
Okay, we'll do that. Great. Ms. Alatell?
Thank you. Yes. In particular, it would be really important to get those safe walking routes to school to the non-motorized plan. The sidewalk data in particular is lacking in that plan due to some GIS irregularities. So I think you have good information that they can use to make sure. Because one of the criticisms of, criticisms of the non-motorized plan is it's too bicycle-centric and not pedestrian-centric, and often some of that's a data flaw. So I think that's really important. And also, if we're noticing problems in safe routes to schools as to pedestrian routes, then that will give us the opportunity to rank those capital projects and put them before AMATS for federal dollars. So, yeah, I'm, I'm on AMATS with Mr. Welton and Mr. Constance. So if there's anything we can do to help, please.
Just reach out. It's, it's easy when you reach out and let us know. Yeah.
And if I might, just on that, it's super complex. And if I might, just on that, it's super complex for us because there are all these moving parts. And I thought we had this talk like six months ago, but then the document opened, right? And so probably somebody, that committee that we thought had been established would have been the proper place for this. But so this one, every five years, we just need to put it in the calendar somewhere because it will continue to happen and some of us will be gone and we won't think about it because we're all drinking from the fire hose.
You're talking to a school district of 50,000 people every day coming to us. They don't get it. We get the fire hose. Especially with, as of late, so.
Thank you. Anything else on this? Mr. France.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick comment. And I think having comprehensive plans listed on here on the agenda that we revisit quarterly, it is helpful to make sure
I like that.
You get moved in and invited.
I mean, this sounds like a failure on our side, the AMATS, to not come back.
Well, I'll ensure staff are there. That's my job, so.
Okay, moving on, other matters of mutual concern. We are way ahead, we did 7A already. 7B, mental health education, Anchorage classrooms, Summer Garden covered some of that. I think this specific thing came from Mr. Deister, who has not been able to join us today, but sadly, this would be his last meeting. Ms. France, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just calling attention to the letter from Dr. Bishop, please support mental health education. That's what we're seeing.
That was Representative Clayman's bill, who supported it, yeah. And you, I think, had a resolution, I think ours is to be voted on next time.
I'm just going to say we do have concerns about that because, again, it's another unfunded mandate. I mean, they're creating the curriculum, they're putting a person in place at D, and they're giving money for that, but they're not giving money to the school districts to be able to provide that additional portfolio.
Ms. Kenny.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And actually, that, I'm glad you brought that up, Ms. Marsete, because that's, you know, just being aware of how things like that get piled on to more and more for the teachers to do. And of course, there's always a cost. So since you are supporting this, though, how are you hoping that it turns out in terms of where it actually comes out of the finished product? And how do you think that you will be implementing it?
Madam President? Yes, okay. So we actually, I had stated before that the new board goals and strategic planning, which the president will be talking about, and I think it's on here, include support for mental health. So we knew that we supported it. Ours is more in regard to part, just so you know, partnerships with Volunteers of America, with our UAA interns to get mental health providers in schools because counseling, counselors can't do it all, they're also held with the academic part of counseling, not just behavioral health or mental health. Right now, actually, our curriculum, when we do get kids, because remember, health is not required, ninth through 12, that's our, their big thing. The mental health components that are actually in the curriculum in regard to feelings and things like this are already actually in our elementary health program. The part that we are lacking is high school, and that's the part that's unfunded. We're saying, okay, so if it's going to be written like Bree's Law or whatever, where every child will get this, we have to think about how, who touches every child every day, you know, it's those classrooms again. What we wanted to do, because we are expanding our mental health already outreach through providers and others, we just wanted to ensure that we are in the talk when they decide how to deploy this. We said, right now, it's DED Administrator and Mental Health from the Department of Health and Human Services. We said, please include like a building-level health teacher or someone who coordinates the health at building levels throughout Alaska and not just Anchorage, to be able to inform how you're going to deploy it. Because there was high consternation, as was mentioned here, about from teacher school, oh, my goodness. And that's high school dating violence was really hard for people to talk about dating. So just, we're aware, we support it, our board supports it, but we're like, how is this going to look? Was our concern, so that's still a question. And Representative Clayman has been very receptive to that.
Thank you. Moving on, ASD strategic planning.
Because I asked to add it to the agenda.
Sorry? Ms. Quinn Davidson?
So I actually met with Dr. Bishop and then asked to have this added to the agenda to talk a little bit about lottery schools and the charter system and maybe some of the inequities that we see. I think there are a high number, particularly in my district, of charter schools, schools that people lottery into that, where students are typically more white and more affluent. And so we've been brainstorming some ways to make sure that all parents have the choice to send their kids to where they would like to and that those opportunities are easily accessible for broad-based folks in our community. And so Dr. Bishop had some great ideas. I mean, some of the challenges are, there's no busing to the charter schools. And so, you know, you have to be a parent who's able to drop your kid off in the morning and pick your kid up. And that means that people who work two jobs or have alternative schedules might not be able to do that. Another challenge that some of you might be aware of is that schools like Paparian, for instance, which is a lottery school, doesn't even serve free lunch or breakfast. The charter schools are able to make that determination on their own through a contract with ASD. So Dr. Bishop and I discussed, oh, is it possible to maybe, in those contracts, think about how we either encourage or mandate that those schools provide free lunches and breakfasts? I mean, what that means, of course, is that poor kids can't go to those schools in effect. So I think there's a lot of issues with those schools. It's great that we have school choice, but what we're seeing is the more affluent and more white members of our society are taking advantage of that choice. And so she said that the school board is aware of that. I know I talked, I think, with Margot Brieschley, with Dina about this issue. And she said that they've been engaged in a strategic plan around trying to address that. So I asked for it to be on the agenda so we can hear about it.
Thank you. Ms. Marsete?
President.
President.
That's a very cool title. The female president, for once.
So, you know, that is something that we're talking about. We have our, Sonya Hunt is here, and she is helping us with those types of issues. But I will tell you, our goals are, you know, we're focusing on three goals based on the values of the community. And it's not, we're not addressing the, I think it's important, that distinction, that we're not trying to solve problems for the community, but we're implementing the values of the community. And so, and I'll just quickly read your three goals. It does not mean that that's not something we're working on, but in our strategic plan, we've come up with those three goals. Now, we do have, I'm sorry, it's a guardrail. A guardrail, yeah, that's what I was getting to, yeah. But we do have guardrails. And so our guardrail is
What does that mean?
It's a, a guardrail is an operational action or class of actions, usually strategic, not tactical. The superintendent may not use or allow in pursuit of the district's student outcome goals. Guardrails are based on the community's values and are aligned with the visionary goals. So when I read this, superintendent will not, and it's a negative statement because with a negative statement, with a, if we were to make it positive, then it's giving direction. And we don't want to give direction. So superintendent will not leave student groups unrepresented, underrepresented in choice programs. So that's how we're addressing that in our guardrail. Some of our other guardrails, superintendent will not operate without a diverse or culturally responsive workforce. Superintendent will not allow unsatisfactory employee performance to go unidentified or under addressed. Superintendent will not allow lower-performing teachers and bottom-two quartiles or principals to staff our underperforming schools. Superintendent will not operate elementary schools without a mental health professional. Those are our guardrails. And then we have three goals that we're going to be focusing on this year. And our goals are, and know that these are things that we have right now, but we're waiting for that phase where we send this draft back out to the public and get feedback from them. So these are not written in stone yet. These are what the board has voted on to move forward as a draft form and to get input from the community before we give the directive to the district, Dr. Bishop. So beginning September 2020, the percentage of third graders proficient in reading on the state summative test currently peaks will increase from 40% to 80% by May of 2025. Beginning number two, beginning September 2020, the percentage of students in grades three through nine proficient in mathematics on the state summative assessment currently peaks will increase from 40% to 80% by 2025. And below each of these are measurements, possible interim goals pertaining to desired student outputs or student outcomes. So how are we going to measure it? The third one is, one of the things we heard is redefining what is ready. Beginning September 2020, the percentage of high school students college-ready, career-ready, and life-ready will increase from such to such. And the thing to look at is, and well, we just weren't ready to give this out yet because it's a draft, but so just to give you an idea, college-ready
They have a copy.
Oh, you have a copy, okay. So you have a copy of it. So it just says, college-ready students are college-ready if they meet the academic GPA or standardized testing benchmarks as listed below, and one or more of the following academic indicators. Life-ready, we'll just skip the life-ready. Life-ready means students leave high school with grit and perseverance to tackle and achieve their goals by demonstrating personal act, what, act, I'm sorry, actual, thank you, skills of self-awareness, self-management, social awareness and social management. So students will complete a financial literacy course beginning with their freshman class in the fall of 2020. And when we say financial literacy, we're talking every day, you know, how do you manage a debit card, investments, that sort of thing. And then it says, and one more following, social, emotional learning skills, successfully complete one online course, Lions Quest, and eighth-grade health course completion. And so those are things that we're working on now to set those guidelines or those, how do we meet that? But in a nutshell, you guys have that. This is what we have, because that was one of the things we've heard over and over, is our students being ready, career-ready, college-ready, and life-ready.
Thank you. Mr. Constance?
So all of that's very interesting. I would jump right back to where Ms. Quinn Davidson started, which isn't clearly in your kind of focal area, but it's some sidebar, a guardrail. I wisely probably, the person who generated that list of kind of demographics by school didn't give me a copy because I probably would be standing on the roof shouting about it because it was so glaring and kind of awful to contemplate what that means for people who don't have the same opportunities as the middle and above. And so whether it's a guardrail or some other thing, I really do hope that we come up with some strategies, or whatever they've said collectively, that will address the disparity because we have generations of disparity.
I could, a guardrail is essentially, within the next five years, we have to change that. That's what, listen to what it says, the superintendent shall not, kind of like, I mean, the Bible and the Constitution, you shall not do, operate this way that you have, so essentially, what's the other thing? You have to operate the other way, right? And it says that our programs and choice programs and differences have to be matched the demographics of the system. So it's already there for the next five years to work on it. You might know that it, there was a work to do to reserve spots in those for certain demographics, and it was challenged, and we lost a court case on that, where we reserved certain spots for certain student groups that we have. So we have to change that. We have to find out other ways, what are the, what are the barriers to parents going? Sometimes it's, it's not transportation, sometimes it's something else. So in order, if it's a lottery, what you have to think about is if the number of kids getting in are not represented, you have to boost up the student groups and the families that, so the chances of them getting in is better if you can't mess with the lottery, right? So we know, like, it is loud and clear from this to us that we have to do it. So it's not, I mean, it's there. It absolutely is there, stronger, I would say, than a goal in a you shall not have non-representation. So I, it's, it's on the plate, it's just going to be tricky to figure out.
I appreciate hearing the five-year boundary. Putting a time constraint onto something makes it more difficult. As it was written, it was very
Yeah.
Hard to grasp what that means. And so it would be nice to hear sometime in the not-too-distant future, next couple of quarters, what the action steps might be towards raising the bar, yeah, in this conversation. Because it is a start.
Yeah. So just follow up on that. So once the public comes back in June, we're going to solidify these. And beginning of the school year, the superintendent and her staff will come back with our objectives and how we're going to reach these.
And I, I actually, I mean, just so you know, the redesign of Ignite was exactly to do that. And that's why it was in Willowah and Wonder Park, and to change the way that we look at that, so all kids would have engagement, and then some get more, because some need more. So we've already started working on it, we have some pilots. That didn't go over so hot, so we're going to rethink and try to engage more and then show really the success of some of the schools who've been able to do it. Willowah is phenomenal, what they've been able to do to turn that around for equity. So loud and clear, because that's another program that's not underrepresented.
Okay, going through the queue here, cognitive of that clock, Ms. Hilding.
Absolutely, I'll be quick. So thank you, too, for bringing it up, because it's something our board is very passionate about. We talked about it Tuesday night. None of our data is hidden, right? So if you want to know, we just had our annual charter school report, we talked about it at our Tuesday night meeting. Those numbers, like, we want you to know these numbers. We want people to talk about it. I don't, it's not a gotcha thing, it's, here's a problem, it's a clear problem, and what are we going to do to address it? But I hope you'll also start to see, you know, in the strategic plan and then in our board meetings, a very pragmatic approach to monitoring, that we can come back at our quarterly meetings and say, here are the steps we've made toward this guardrail or any of our goals. And you're going to start seeing very clear where you're at, where's your, you know, we're working as a board with a coach, really, a volunteer from Texas Department of
Education.
Education. He's with Council Great City Schools. But this is a guy who's really willing us accountable to how are you monitoring your students' progress and what's happening in your district? And so we welcome it, like, please ask us these questions because we want to answer them and we want to be held accountable for our students' benefits.
All right, Ms. Quinn Davidson?
I'll just be quick. I just want to thank Dr. Bishop because she and I met with a constituent and also a staffer of hers, and we brainstormed all kinds of ideas. And so I know the school district and the board is working on this. I just want to, I wanted to let all of my colleagues know, and also maybe we should put it on the agenda for regular updates, because I think it's important.
Ms. Alatell?
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Quinn Davidson, for bringing up the issue of equity. As to this issue, I'm a little dismayed that there isn't more of an equity-based board goal in the board goals, that they're very academically focused. We know there are disproportionate impacts to students of color, students with special needs in the district, particularly around discipline, and those have academic impacts, and that's not really addressed here. So I would like to flag that as another equity issue that I think really should be addressed in a conscientious and systematic way.
Actually, that is part of the board goals, it's just not driven. Each of our goals are shared by student group. And so in the, and you can actually go on the data dashboard, so sorry, it's not explicit, just the minutia, just the detail of the information isn't at this level, but certainly the only, the goal is to narrow the gap but keep everybody growing, because you don't want to narrow the gap by regression to the mean. So we report year after year, every student group, whether it's a demographic of someone's nationality, or actually, one of our biggest differences is in poverty. So those are reported, get back to the board for those individual things on reading and writing, those core functional things that get you into other programs. And so in order to get into specialized programs, especially at the high school level, whether it's AP, IB, honors classes, it takes these fundamental skills to get there. We also are working with the College Board's Equity Group and doing a study and, in four high schools next year, to impact the number of the big delta where kids should be in this program and they even have the skill. So why aren't we getting them in there? What's the roadblock? So those are the, here's the major goals, and then how do you change that major goal? Of course, you have to change your student groups. So it drills down, down, down. That drill-down level is not of the outcomes that we want, isn't presented here, but I want to guarantee that that is our concern as well. It's our city, and we see the data now and are not satisfied with it.
Good. Thank you. Anything else? So we have almost no time, we have three other items, 7D, E, and F. And I wouldn't mind postponing those next quarter. I think there will still be climate change, the municipal seal still will not be changed, and the census will
Well, the census, the census, I believe, the
Yeah.
We all saw that question.
Okay.
Do we have our two?
Yes, second.
Okay. Any other position? Okay, good. Twelve fifteen, twenty-twenty census. I sense Ms. Rivera has something to say?
You sense correctly, Mr. Chair. So, yeah, just wanted to give quick updates for the school board and administration on the twenty-twenty census, and then wanted to ask if there was anything that the school board or districts wanted to talk to us about your efforts within the school district. So the, what I would really highlight and thank Sonia, she is one of the co-chairs for the Anchorage Complete Counts Commission and has been doing a fantastic job. So I don't know if you want to say anything after I'm done, but the Complete Counts Commission has been really hard at work over the last month on working with hard-to-count populations. My colleagues know that I'm specifically working with the Latinx communities, and we have some pretty amazing things going on to get out the census in the Latinx communities, and a variety of our commissioners are focused on different parts of our community and hard-to-count populations and hard-to-count areas in our town. Also want to note that thanks to Mr. Constan forwarding an email to me, we are going to be looking at potentially getting some funding through the National League of Cities. Could be a decent amount, and working hopefully with the school district on that for us to get out the census count. And so that's something that I'm excited to work with Sonia on. Then Sonia, do you want to add anything?
I was just going to mention, good afternoon, just going to mention just a brief timeline about like just the collaborations that have taken place. So on January seventeenth, Superintendent Dr. Gina Bishop welcomed U.S. Census Director Dr. Stephen Dillingham to the Alaska Native Charter School, where they did a really wonderful job in engaging all students on just the work and the importance of the twenty-twenty census. February third, ASD was able to host the community meeting, opened by Mayor Berkowitz and First Lady Kimmel. And thanks to the leadership of Assemblyman Felix Rivera, we had interpreters available for that evening to translate into our most spoken languages. There were about fifty-five to sixty participants engaged around outreach to their respective smaller communities. In terms of communications, there has been, flyers were made available at larger programs, community programs like the Martin Luther King Junior Celebration at West High School. On February sixth, the Census Administrator Shannon Kahn, along with Assemblyman Rivera, along with the CCC co-chairs, met to just review the MOA resolution to ensure that we are following what we said that we would do in fulfilling our promises to the city for this effort. On February twenty-ninth, census personnel were present at the annual Betty Davis Summit, held at Bartlett High School. And as a reminder, census enumeration will begin mid-March, with Census Day being April first. And just keep in mind that our democracy, data, and dollars are all at stake. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. So, yeah, just, you know, we all have pulpits, and so the more that we can talk about the census, the more that we can encourage folks to take the census, and delay any concerns that folks might have about any privacy, security issues with the census, I think the more that we can ensure adequate counts, and that helps us, that helps the school district, that helps everyone. And then if you don't mind while I have the pulpit. So, yeah, just wanted to loop back in on the conversation that we started with the budget, and just want to sort of correct something for the record. Unfortunately, our clerk isn't here, because she's running elections, but if she were here, she would tell you what she just texted me during this meeting, which is that this March meeting, our joint meeting, is always when we go through the budget and have a detailed present presentation. We don't do special work sessions on the budget. So I don't know what happens, not casting any aspersions, but if we can try to get that fixed for next year, I think that'd be great. We'd have to have a three-hour meeting. Well, it's usually a long one when we do it in March, yeah.
Maybe that's something you have a schedule separately.
Yeah. Okay, anything else?
No, thanks.
So just-
President Marset?
Yes. So just on that note, Mr. Rivera, so if you feel necessary, we can always schedule another meeting just to go with the budget, if that is something you guys would like to do.
I think I heard that from-
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm just saying for next year, this should be the meeting where we go really long on the budget.
We're scheduling a special meeting?
Yeah.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
We can do it.
Yeah.
Which-
Please not.
We'll work that out.
Okay.
We'll have professionals work that schedule, not us. Okay, municipal seal, is that, should we put that?
We could just, Mr. Dyson did.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, we could just show you what to do.
We had some wonderful examples, and we welcomed four or five, I guess we rewarded them, they got my certificates, but they didn't show up.
You could just-
Climate change?
That's me.
About Mr. Rivera?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just wanted to give a brief update, because I've been talking about this at these meetings regularly. And so there was a meeting of the Youth Advisory Commission a few weeks back, and they are moving forward with creating a youth advisory council, and they're going to be bringing forward some conversations to the school board in the near future on climate change. So just as a get-ready-for-your-students study, bring that forward to you.
Any comments on that? All right, thank you. Scheduled upcoming joint meeting, June twelfth, ten a.m. to noon, maybe noon fifteen. Any member comments? Can you go around, Ms. Hildy? Kennedy?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to mention that the Chigayaki River Chamber of Commerce is having their Excellence in Education Awards Dinner on March the twenty-fourth, which I am just heartbroken that I can't attend, because typically it's one of those events that is just really cherished by Chigayaki River members, and get the opportunity to select, well, the schools select one teacher or staff member from their schools to award them with just our Excellence in Education Award, and it's just an amazing event. And anyway, but I would love to have invited all of you out there, but we'll be sitting in the Luise Sack Library instead that day, but I at least wanted to let you know that the community is carrying on the tradition of recognizing our quality educators in our Chigayaki River area.
Thank you. Mr. Marset?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I just wanted to express my gratitude to board members and members of the district for your work on the budget. What I heard today is that we can't afford to fully fund school, and I'm just wondering what happens next year? You know, do we cut down another day? We could save a lot of money if we go to four days a week or half-days. Why even have school at all? That would be the cheapest option. I mean, if we're just looking at costs. So as someone who grew up here and had an excellent education, I'm really alarmed by how we are shortchanging students and our community and our state and our future. So I'm still wrapping my head around that, because I'm alarmed about that on many levels. And I don't understand how this can be good for kids. I don't understand how this is good for outcomes. And, you know, it's pretty clear to me that you do more with less at a certain point. You have to do less with less. And so I know that it's very challenging, and I appreciate the thoughtfulness and hard work of the board and the district in addressing these issues. I think that, as Mr. Rivera indicated, you know, there are bigger aspects to this that we have to take on in terms of our relationship and communications with state legislators. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Quinn-Davidson?
Just wanted to say how thankful I am to have Suzanne on our assembly. And I agree with everything she said. Thanks for your hard work, and I'm sorry that you're not getting what you need to do right for our students.
Awesome.
I would like to, at risk of making light of the circumstances, speaking on behalf of the union of students who like long summer breaks, I think that you are doing the best you can with what you have, and I look forward to the conversation on the budget and approving the budget.
Michaela?
I can't believe I'm going to say this or ask this. I've been on the board for, you know, five years now, and I think probably this last year I have seen more collaboration between, more conversation between the school board and the assembly than I have, and while I was at our program meetings, but good questions are being asked and good conversations are being had, and that's what our kids and our community need. And so I don't know at some point if we do want to have a longer meeting or move them to two months instead of three months, so that we can continue to keep the good efforts that are, you know, being put forth, some more power and some more, you know, emphasis behind them, especially during the challenging times of, you know, budget and legislative session and all the other things we have going on. I know that we're all buried in meetings and our, and time and our lives and stuff like that, but I just think that while everything's working, we should encourage it.
Thank you. Mr. Hollen?
I do want to say I agree that in difficult circumstances, having the assembly and the mayor be an ally is a huge plus. Doesn't always work that way, but it really does make a big difference. One of the assembly members shared the final outcome of the investigation about providing full-time to schools for swim classes. The numbers are real high, so I understand that. It did look to me like the math was done on the basis of the district being an organization that wanted to make use of a pool, and this is how much it costs to provide that. I'm hoping maybe it'll be looked at to where we might pay the marginal cost of having a pool for an hour. It looked more like all the costs were rolled in, and pools are expensive, and that's, there's no question about that. We don't really necessarily seek out pools for the enjoyment of our students, but it's an important skill, and more importantly, provides you guys with swimmers. Because of the current rate we're going, where it's very limited as to what part of the population gets swim lessons, I think we're going to be looking at white cards overseeing pretty empty pools, and at some point that just becomes completely expensive and we lose them. So it's still something I care about a lot. And it is one of the things where you step back, as a city, can we really not afford to have swim lessons for a whole bunch of kids in our town? I think it's sad that we can't figure out a way to go forward on that.
Thank you, Chris Donald.
Excuse me, just a few really personal thoughts, having to do with the budget and all the work that we all do for, you know, for our kids and for the community. You know, as a teacher, I really focused on my classroom. And I mean, I had the flexibility and the support to know my kids. As a principal, I focused on my school. Now on this board, I have to focus on the community. And those meetings are overwhelming. So we have to work together, and we have to look at things differently. We've got to try things differently. And I survived my first budget at the community level. It was a nineteen and a half million-dollar cut. I didn't sleep for weeks. But I do think we did the right thing. I think we engaged in appropriate ways, and we're going to get better. We're going to get better. But I do, I just thank you guys for being willing to come to the table, because this is no joke. This is real time. I mean, this is, this is life with death. This is the future of our kids. And so it's going to take all of us. And so we may come at things differently, but in the end, the outcome has to be, it has to be focused on kids. And that's where I am. I appreciated the conversation on equity, because until we define what it is, we're not going to ever achieve it. If we ask everybody in this room what we thought it was, what it is, you're going to say something different. Until we define what it is, we're never going to achieve it. And I only have another two years now on this board, and that is my goal, to define it so that the whole community understands it, and we are all focused on it. And then we see all the work, I see all the work that's going into it, but other people don't see it, because we have not defined it in a way for them to understand it. So yes, it's privilege, and yes, it's kids getting opportunities, and parents who can't get their, drive their kids, parents who can't volunteer. Those are all barriers that we can fix. But if we don't understand what it is, have a working knowledge of what it is, we're never going to do it. That's just, we're never going to do it. So that's our challenge. Together, we need to define what equity is, and we need to move forward in making it happen in language that is meaningful to the groups that we want to, that we need to impact.
Thank you. Mr. Hollen?
Sometime soon, we need to get together as elected officials of Anchorage and talk about the coronavirus potential impacts and how we're going to coordinate as both public employers and our school system. It seems to have been in county this week, it's happening all over the world, and we need to talk about that as a group of elected officials sometime very soon.
Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just to follow up on that, I believe I heard on the news that Natsu Valley has already come up with a plan, what they're going to do if the virus happens to get out there. What I want to emphasize to all of us is we need to be in contact with the administration and Juno and our legislators, and let them know that we are at a critical stage in education, and if we're not careful, the future of our young people is, they're going to be vulnerable. And we already have the lowest percentage of our high school graduates in this state that go on to college, and the direction we're headed right now, that number's going to go nowhere but down. That is not good for the future of our state.
Thank you. Ms. Alatell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you all for your hard work on the budget and for the information. It's always very, very informative. I would echo what Ms. LeBrance and what Ms. Bellamy said. I think both of those are just so, such salient points right now, and it's, I mean, lucky, I mean, Ms. Hildy's kids coming in at a very opportune time here to kind of push the issue home, because as we talk about this, all I can keep in mind, you know, are all the kids I see on a day-to-day basis. And Anchorage was an opportunity place for me when I came up straight out of college, and I want to see the kids that are here have those same opportunities. And that's grounded in starting at the school level, I think, and we need to do whatever we can to support that.
Thank you, Ms. Rivera. We're watching the clock.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So really quick, you know, I've really come to love these meetings for exact reasons that Ms. Michaela stated. I think we work really well together. We're okay challenging each other, talking about difficult subjects and not taking it personally, and I think that's great. I want to thank the school board for, and the administration for your hard work on the budget, and you all have fought so hard for all the students that you represent, and I think you can count on us to fight for you as well, and you know. Thank you.
Thank you. President Marset?
Not a word. Ford?
Well, it all sounds so depressing. You know, the good news is, and I'm just going to say this, yep, we got challenging times. I love working with you guys. You know, it's just a group that can sit here and talk about things, and like you said, go home, you know, shake hands when we leave. But we're doing good things too. So let's don't forget that. We have kids that are-
High school students.
Yeah, we have kids that are being successful. Yes, we've got challenges, but we've got good things going on, you know?
We have a community that values education.
Right. Now we just got to get somebody else to do that.
And I'll follow up on that. And my kids got a great education in the school district. They're all very different. There's something's involved. I went to, you know, February's business schools. I went to Diamond East and Bartlett. Every single one, there are people that are excited about what's going on and good things, and most of the conversation was not the challenges that are very real, but what good stuff is going on at my school? And it's, so, a lot of good going on there. So we have a brief moment for audience participation. Would anyone like to speak? Mr. Haberman?
My name is Eugene Carl-Haberman. Alaska resident for over forty-two years, Anchorage resident for approximately twenty, and currently in Natsu Valley. Number one, you have closing comments, but it would have been nice to hear from the people before you have closing comments. They do that with the Anchorage Assembly- They do that with the Anchorage Assembly meetings, and then you cannot respond to what the public says, you end the meeting. Where do I go here? I've been in this room, dealing with the car, the discussion on the virus, with the Health Department Semi-Health Committee a couple days ago, where the presentation, I still am waiting for a copy of that presentation I haven't received. And also witnessed at the Bureau Assembly meeting in, in the valley, and they're addressing the issue and how they're, how they're dealing with it. And I was at the school board meetings Wednesday, and how the superintendent and the school board are handling the situation. Now, there were some, some serious similarities. One is on the decision by both the school board administration on the travel issue going outside of Alaska, and both in the district, you both made decisions without consulting and having a meeting with the school board. You both did that. There was deep concern out in the valley at that meeting, but with respect, with respect, I understand you have to look for the safety of the children, teachers, and all that, and I'm glad you're recognizing that need and you're trying to deal with it. But working in a vacuum without that consultation with the school boards, both in the valley and in Anchorage, and not having a public meeting discussion about it, even if you're doing an emergency situation with your limited amount of time, is not helping the situation because without that conversation, we are seeing as we're, I'm standing here, continued alarm, panic. Panic is gonna continue more because of the unknown. Without that dialogue and conversation, we are creating a situation that's gonna be more difficult, and also unnecessary panic in some cases. But having that dialogue, which we're not doing on the issue, and I stayed, stayed in this room a couple days ago, where is the plan for this scenario? Does the school district have that plan? Are you working on it right now? I've yet to get a response on that issue by the Ms. Pat of Anchorage administration, by the, out in the, where is that plan? This is, you create a plan now? Let me say this, it's too late, but the best thing you can do is have not the, the conversation in a, away from the people, and, and allow for the public to have their say. Thank you.
It's on the website.
On the website?
Plan.
We have it on the website.
Yeah, it is. Parents are getting info every day.
Booderm.